I'd like to call the May 16th meeting of the Johnson County Board of Commissioners to order. Welcome those who are here in person and welcome those who are viewing wherever you are on our YouTube channel. As is customary, I'd like to call on Commissioner Smith for our prayer and Commissioner Godwin for our pledge. If you would, please stand.
Lord God, we come to you and petition you tonight for wisdom as we deal with the business of Johnson County. We thank you for this absolutely beautiful day that you provided us here. We thank you that we live in this wonderful county. We pray for our county. We pray that as commissioners, we will make decisions that are in the best interest of our county and that will be according to your wishes. We thank you for our country. We ask you to be with the election day tomorrow for our state, help it to be a safe election. And we pray all these things in the strong and powerful name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
If you would, please face the flag. If you're a veteran, you may render your hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is approval and discussion of the agenda. I would like to note that Dr. Bennett Jones has requested to postpone item number seven, the Clayton High School request, until our June 6th meeting. And with that, do I hear any other adjustments or a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, with that noted change, I move for approval.
Do I hear second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Next up, we have a presentation from Ms. Cleveland, Outstanding Teen. Is she? There we go. Welcome, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. So my name's Madison McVeigh. I am Ms. Cleveland's Outstanding Teen 2022. I'm going to share a little bit about myself and my social impact initiative. So my social impact initiative started last July. It was when a family friend of mine unfortunately passed away. He was an organ donor and he was able to donate his heart to another young adult. And so it really struck a chord in my heart and it made me really passionate about organ donation and kind of the importance of it. So I started researching a little bit about it and I came across the Miss America Organization. And so with that, I've been able to compete in local preliminaries when I won the title of Ms. Cleveland's Outstanding Teen. And with that, I have been able to just kind of spread the awareness of how important it is about organ donation. You know, there's over 100,000 people in the national transplant list and 1,800 of those people are under the age of 18. And so it's really important for me to just kind of go across North Carolina and just bring awareness to this topic that's very important. I'll be competing for Miss North Carolina's Outstanding Teen in June, which is next month, crazy to say. And so for there, I'll be able to also promote my social impact initiative at a state level so get my voice out there even more. I have a few goals for myself this year with this impact initiative. I would like to go into schools and talk about it a little more and kind of get the importance to, you know, 16-year-olds who are getting their license about how important it can be, that little check yes and that little heart on your license. I also plan on doing some registration drives across North Carolina, specifically in the Cleveland community. I'd absolutely love representing Cleveland inside of Johnston County. I'm not from Johnson County, I'm from Nash County, but I can say that I have a very big heart for Johnston County now and I have loved every minute of my reign. So there's just so much that this opportunity, they have given me so many opportunities to be able to come and speak to you guys and just be able to speak into the community. I was at the Ham and Yam Festival and I got to meet so many amazing people. And so I just really thank them for this opportunity. So thank you guys so much for having me and learning a little bit more about me. So thank you.
Any questions, comment?
I've got to come in. I couldn't remember and I've looked at my license. I do have a heart on there.
Yay! Well, I'm very glad that you have a heart on your license. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you.
So typically, we do a little photo op. So that's if you want to.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's perfect. Right. Yeah, if you guys can get in the middle there. Move your chair.
Okay. Don't fall for that.
All right. One, two, three, take one more. Perfect. Wait, wait. More too fast.
The paparazzi want her picture. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And I do want to back up. You'll notice that Vice Chair Patrick Harris is not here tonight. He is not able to be with us since his regrets. So I should have taken care of that to start with. Next up, we have consent agenda items. I would like to add that each one of you have had an opportunity in the Haverhill seat the letter of support for the I-95, I-40 Crossroads of America Economic Development Alliance, where the Advanced Technology Center. And just make sure that's added to the agenda. The other items were approval from our April 18th meeting, proclamation of Summer Learning Week, which is July 11th through the 15th. And let's see, Celebrate Cleveland Community Request to Temporary Road Closure for their Fourth of July celebration. Also have Johnson County Soil and Water Conservation District a letter of support for an environmental enhancement grant. We have three budget revisions and appointments to the Fire Protection Commission for Meadow and then also the letter of support we just mentioned. So I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items with the letter of support. So move.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next up, we have public comments. And let me read our little disclaimer here. This is time for any audience member that wishes to address the board on an item that is not already on the agenda, that may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your general location, township, town. No need to give a specific address. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the board and at all times, you'll maintain proper decorum and make comments in a civil manner. And just a reminder that this is a public comment, a listening session for the board. So there is not intended for questions and answers from the board. So if there's anybody here, I think we have at least one here to speak tonight. So if you'd come forward and state your name and where you're from.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Derek Applewhite from the Cleveland community. And although you may not want to take a picture with me, I can deliver some good news to y'all. And in front of you, you have a pamphlet with some information regarding the Second Annual Earth Day Countywide Cleanup Hosted and Organized by the Friends of Johnson County Parks. And on behalf of the Friends, I want to pass along our thanks for your support in the work that we've been doing. But we want to deliver good news. We collected over three, or nearly 3,000 pounds of trash across Johnson County at seven participating locations and mobilized hundreds of volunteers on April 23rd in support of Earth Day and ensuring our community looks good. As we all know, you know, we can't always rely on other entities to pick up the trash in our community. Sometimes we have to take it in our own hands. So that's exactly what we did with this event. And the Friends of Johnson County Parks obviously is continuing to advocate in support of parks, recreation, trails, and the arts in our community. And we hope that as you continue to see these things come across your desk, that you will be in support of them. And you could check on the back of that sheet as well. Thousands of supporters across Johnson County, thousands of Friends that support this work and know how vital it is to our communities, not only in terms of health and happiness, but in dollars and cents. This is an economic development tool just as much as it is to support the activity in our communities, the wellness in our communities. So we hope that y'all continue to support that. If y'all have any questions or anything that you would like to continue to see from us, we're happy to hear that. And as you want to come out and pick up trash, we'll continue to host these events for you. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Derek, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
My Rotary Club, I used to be in, would participate in a cleanup of the river each year. Was that in conjunction with this or is that a separate event?
That is a separate event. We haven't quite found enough of our Friends that are ready to jump in the Neuse River yet, but we're working on it and we're looking to.
Well, this was on canoes and boats and that type of thing.
Yeah, well, we'll consider that. We were looking to do something like that and maybe we'll look at it next year. This was along roadways and trails and parks and in our schools, but we'll look at the Neuse as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I would like to say thank you to the Friends of Johnson County Parks. I know it's been, it seems like yesterday, but a couple of years that y'all really joined with the county and promoted our parks and opportunities and really stepped in to do things such as this. I want to say thank you for doing more than your part to make sure that people are aware of what's going on and the opportunities in Johnson County. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, sir. Y'all have a great evening.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else here for the public comment? All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any emails? All right, no emails. All right. It is 6:10, so we can proceed on with this item number five, which is a public hearing for Public Safety Center Financing. If you'll bear with me while I read several sentences here. This is the date placed an hour fixed by the Board of Commissioners for a public hearing concerning a proposed plan of financing an aggregate principal amount of up to $17,500,000 involving the entry by the county into an installment financing contract with the Johnson County Finance Corporation pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-20 as amended, the proceeds of which will be used to pay all or a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of one or more new buildings to be used as public safety facilities for Johnson County. Under the contract, the county would secure the repayment by the county of the monies advanced pursuant to such contract by granting a security interest in and lean on all or some portion of the project and all or some portion of the real property upon which the project is located. The obligations of the county under the contract will not be deemed to be a pledge of faith and credit of the county within the meaning of any constitutional debt limitation. No deficiency judgment may be rendered against the county in any action for breach of the contract and the taxing power of the county is not and may not be pledged directly or indirectly or contingently to secure any monies due under the contract. If there's anyone here present that wishes to be heard on this matter, please come forward. Seeing no one wishing to come forward, I will close the public hearing. And that's it till we get to the end. Okay, so we have some more action at the end. Thank you. All right. Next up is a finance resolution for Public Safety Center Financing. And I believe Ms. Laster is going to present to us on that.
Under this item, we're asking you to adopt the resolution in your packet, a proven plan to finance the construction of the Public Safety Center and to adopt the amended capital project ordinance that's in your packet as well. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions from Ms. Laster?
I don't, Ms. Chairman, I move to adopt the resolution and the capital project ordinance.
A second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item seven has been postponed. Next up, we have a presentation by the Fire Chiefs Association, Fire Service Supplemental Funding Matrix. And Fire Chief from Cleveland is coming to speak to us, Chris Ellington. Good evening, Chief Ellington.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm going to give a little bit of time for all the chiefs that are present to come in and get a chance to hear the presentation as well, if you don't mind.
It's good to see a lot of them here.
We do have representation from all over the county, our very diverse county that we have. So we have small and large, but, but first off, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for letting us to present tonight, present what we're calling our supplemental funding matrix. I believe each Commissioner has a copy of that matrix in their, in their packet. And to give you a little bit of history behind this, last year, we started a Johnson County fire study. And the original committee worked through that study and developed, and helped develop with the third party what our future Johnson County needed to look like in the fire service. And it gave us a roadmap. After the study was completed, the committee sat down and went through modules and gave a quick overview of what some of the issues were in our county. A lot of issues were indicated pretty quickly. And one of the largest was that we were not providing equal service across the county. Our service was a little bit different and notably so because of our areas. And as you can see in our matrix, you know, we've identified some of those problems. One issue that we saw was meeting state and federal standards and the funds that it took to do that. Some of these departments, we have budgets across our county from six million all the way to $100,000. That's how diverse we are. Some of these departments can't meet some of these standards that we need, that are set for us to meet. So we developed a plan to come tonight and just not to tackle that one item, but tackle a lot of items. Another item that was abundantly clear through our study was staffing, our staffing need in the county. Our lack or declining number of volunteers throughout the county is a huge problem. And that is going to, that is going to have to be faced here very soon. Departments that once had a workforce that farmed in that community are no longer farming that community. We're putting houses there, we're developing that land, and those farmers are seeking other options to work. So that workforce in today is being depleted. We put together our matrix and going through that, we identified our problem with our common level of service. And when we identified that problem, we sent out surveys to our fire chiefs, working through the study. We surveyed our chiefs throughout the study, giving each of them input. And that input we received, we received information back about what it took to run a fire department and meet these standards. And our average came back around $333,000, what it, the bare minimum it would take to meet all the standards. As you can see in our matrix, we have eight departments that do not meet a $300,000 minimum we set. So that was the issue. These departments are having to go either try to supplement through fundraising or they're just not able to provide certain testing and things like that for their departments. Moving across the matrix, we identified several things, all the way from our ISO ratings. Our departments are keeping those up. We're probably one of the only counties around that can say that every fire department in Johnson County is at least a five rating. That is tremendous. If you ask other counties, they can't say that about their departments. They're spread all the way out from a nine all the way to a one. So Johnson County, every department is at least rated as a five. That's great. We talked about our first responder funding and our supplemental funding. Part of that's already done through the general fund. I believe there's about $290,000 already allocated through that. And you can see through our matrix how we have that figured. Rescue funding, that is a different animal in all in itself. Rescue funding for our specialty rescue such as trench, high angle, water rescue, things like that, that's a topic that we've not really tackled in a very long time. That was a item that really needed to be brought to attention. The minimum funding supplement is, I believe it's a grayish block. That funding, and in your key, it shows you all what that funding's for. That's for our annual testing of our trucks, our air pipes, our AEDs. It covers insurance, gap insurance that, for our volunteers and our annual pensions, things like that. And one of the fire chiefs tonight, I won't share his name, but one of the fire chiefs was going to be here tonight, called yesterday to apologize for not being able to make it. He was, he said, if we don't do anything tonight, he said, we're really in distress on this. Our prayers go out to him and his family because he's been diagnosed with throat cancer. Through some of this supplemental insurance that their department can afford, his family will not suffer any financial hardship directly because of some of this insurance we mean and we've seen this block. As the fire chiefs met and talking about this and the committee carried the findings back to them, a meeting was held and all 23 fire chiefs signed a letter of support for this funding matrix. I gave the letter to the clerk and in that letter, you'll find that they all are in support of getting the county to a minimum standard, getting our departments to a minimum standard. When I asked what was the least thing you wanted to see out of this, and it was these lower wealth departments meet that standard and be able to provide that service for their community. And then the second thing was the block here with all our annual testing. We want to make sure everybody's doing that as well. So in that, if the whole matrix was adopted, it's about a three and a half million dollar fund. We understand that's a lot to jump out there and talk about at one time, especially just fresh out of this fire study. So we provided an implementation plan, a suggestion. One thing we want this document to do is be a living document. We want it to be something we can address annually, something we can go back to and reference for funding. Our first request would be from the general fund, you know, to fund our minimum standards block and the low wealth departments, fund those up to $300,000 from the general fund. And I know that's not a popular, popular thing. We also provided some information on different funding methods. And the different funding methods, there's multitude of them out there. We've been across the state asking and just conversating with different counties about how they do things. Anything from a sales tax to a special fire tax has been talked about. And there's just multiple options out there. We'd really like to present this and take time here in the future to talk about alternate methods of funding. As I said, our first request would be from our general fund, but we feel it's important that we're getting these departments up to a certain standard. We feel like that every citizen in Johnson County needs the same fire protection, no matter whether you're in Cleveland or you're all the way in Bentonville. They all deserve the same fire protection. So I would ask, is there any questions? That's a very brief overview and I've had conversations with multiple Commissioners about this topic and, but I just wanted to breeze through this tonight and just give you a brief, brief overview altogether. But if there's some questions that we can answer, we'd be glad to.
Any questions for Chief Ellington?
I would commend you, Chief. If you can get all 23 on the same page at the same time, that's quite an accomplishment.
It is. I counted that as a win, Commissioners Godwin, when we all agreed to do something for the betterment of the service.
Any other comments or questions?
It's rare to see so much commitment from all these guys in the same room at the same time.
Yeah, I too would like to commend all the chiefs, first off, for the work you do for protecting all the folks in Johnson County. Thank you for that, but thank you for the time that you spent putting this together. I think it provides a great framework. As we all know, volunteers is going down. We're going to have to go to full-time staff. So beginning this process of looking for how do we properly fund the fire services for all of Johnson County, and I agree with Chief Ellington, is, you know, it doesn't matter where you are, you should expect a similar level of service across the county. When somebody calls 911, they should know the train, people are going to arrive in a reasonable amount of time for whatever their need is. So I see this as a starting point. There is a ton of information here. I know, you know, throughout the course of the almost four years I've been up here, this has been something we've talked about in pieces and parts, but I think this is the first time that I have seen where this has all been presented in one, in one piece. So it helps us begin to make decisions for how do we fund fire services in the future. I agree, coming back with other options on how we fund that is critical. So I think that again, a great first step, you know, what we've got here is just now we need to figure out how do we put that into play and put some funding into it so that we can provide the training that you need and then these other services, the specialty training and all that stuff, how do we do that? So any other comments?
Ms. Chairman, I, you know, first of all, I want to say thanks to you, to your committee for the great job, a lot of dedication. Ms. Chairman, I would recommend and suggest that we receive this report and that you as chairman appoint someone to, appoint a committee for us to study it and to address the needs. Certainly, you know, some of them operate on a wing and a prayer, you know? And so if you want for chickens, I don't know how some of them would operate quite frankly.
I don't think they could put fuel in the trucks if it wasn't for chickens and rifles.
But anyway, if we could do that so we can, you know, take a positive step forward in that we can address how we need to proceed.
I think all these chiefs have put in a lot of time and effort just to make their meeting tonight and show support for this. But I think Commissioner Razzle's got a good point. As Chief Ellington said, there's more than one way to get to this end and we need to figure out how best we can do that. But y'all have given us a good framework to work with and so I would support what he says and let's take an advisement and not just sit on it, but figure out a way to do it.
You know, I respect a report back maybe in June of some of the things that we want to toss around. Certainly, we would like to invite some of you folks to be a part of that also, Chief.
Yes, sir. We'd love to.
I think y'all have done the hard work for us. We got the information and so I think it's a matter of us deciding what size fits all. If we want to make sure everybody's equal, it's going to be a hard thing because as you know, a lot of counties have different rate, a lot of the districts have different tax values. And when a fire tax doesn't always generate enough to take care of this in a lot of these districts.
To do nothing is not a choice.
That's right. I think so.
So we'll.
And I think we need to address the volunteer issue at the same time. I know it's not particularly, that's not in, that change into all volunteers is not in that data, but it's something I think we need to.
Well, we'll do that if, and I would guess that myself, I will pick a committee of two or three. I'll get with chief and with our Director of Emergency Services to make sure that we have the right people together. And we will get together sometime shortly to meet Commissioner Razzle's June time for reporting back.
They'll have to be real soon.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, he's going to be part of it. He signed himself. No, no, you're good.
Didn't push it out too far.
No, you're good. You're good. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to bring this framework and just kind of a roadmap for where we're going. We are, we're excited. This is a first for the fire service of Johnson County and we're really looking forward to our future and us helping shape that. So if we can be of any assistance or answer any questions, please feel free to contact us and we'll, looking forward to the meeting and talking some more.
And I got a couple ideas. I am going to be talking to two or three or four chiefs in the next week or so about fire tax rate.
Okay. And I will, I will kick in that we have done a little bit of policing on our own, talking about fire tax rate, talking about fund balance. We have done a little bit of that on our own, but that is a topic that needs to be discussed.
Yeah. So I think we need to, well, anyway, that's one starting point right there.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Well, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to stand.
Thank you, Chiefs, for coming. Thank you for what you do.
And what we do without you.
Yeah.
Amen.
All right. Next up, we have a presentation from Parks, Greenways, and Open Space Coordinator Adrian O'Neil regarding to Park Master Plan Project Agreement. So Mr. O'Neil, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Wanted to come for you tonight. We've, we've done some work on getting a little further along towards the Cleveland Park. We sent out, upon your approval, we sent out a RFQ quest for qualifications back at the end of 2021. We received six packages from different companies. We had a small panel to review those packages. We came up with Stewart Incorporated out of Raleigh that seemed to have the capacity and the ability to do the work. And they have given us proposal, that proposal is in your documentation tonight. And we are requesting permission to go forward with this company and the proposal that they've submitted. And this is for a master plan, conceptual master plan for Cleveland Park. They're going to assess what's at the old Cleveland school and the sports facilities and the new parcel of land that we've got. Um, and this is for a master plan, conceptual master plan for Cleveland Park. They're going to assess what's at the old Cleveland school and the sports facilities and the new parcel of land that we've got. Um, and what we'll end up with in the very end is updated site plans for all sites, and really, when you're looking at this, you're looking at three sites. There's the old school site, there's the larger track, uh, at the new site, and then there's a smaller track, the new site, a 12 acre triangle. So there's three of those. Um, they're going to give us two final renderings for each project site, call, updated cost estimates, executive summary with an action plan, uh, phasing, how we can phase this in over time, because obviously it'd be very expensive to do all the work on that site at one time, and, uh, potential grant funding sources. Um, and there will be at least two public comment sessions, public meetings where people from all over the county can put their viewpoint in as far as what we need in that area. Um, you may remember from the countywide master plan that Cleveland was one of the places that, uh, it was determined that we could use a regional style park, and this will be a regional style park, uh, when it's completed. The total cost of this master plan is $122,600. Um, and at this time, I'll entertain any questions.
No questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Several years ago, when this, uh, sports council through the visitors bureau commissioned a comprehensive recreation plan, and they solicited input from stakeholders, not unlike our master land use plan process, but what you're talking about in this process would be more like a DOT with public people coming in and looking at.
It'll be a drop-in, most likely a drop-in session because that's what most of the planning folks have kind of gone to, and they'll have two of those, uh, most likely in that, probably one there, possibly one here in Smithfield, I'm not sure on that second one yet, but they'll also develop a website where anybody that's got a computer can go in and make comments.
Would that, that plan then be of any value to this organization in looking at this as far as the input?
Oh, yeah. They, they already have copies of that. They, they have copies of any information we've got on the Cleveland site, on the new site, and, uh, there was a lot of that because, you know, we had a federal grant involved and a state grant involved, and this plan is the first step in furthering those grant processes. We've got to have a plan in place before we start applying for part of the Land and Water Conservation Trust Fund.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve this, uh, agreement with Stewart, Dean.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion other than my one question?
I have a question.
Commissioner Brazel?
My, I'm, I'll make sure I'm understanding this correctly. Most of this, uh, parks and recreation type is all in the Cleveland area? I mean, is it?
Well, this first project is, and, and the reason for that is because that was the area that was kind of teed up when we started.
I just want to make sure that we remember that there are other areas of the county, and we are just as obligated to those people as we are the, the more populated areas. We need to spread the love throughout the county. I want to just keep that in mind, and then we talk about recreation and parks, everybody's going on them.
And, and we, we, I will add that, you know, we added the parcel at East Clayton Elementary, which eventually will be a boat ramp hopefully, and we also, uh, just added the parcel beside the water plant, which we've got some good leads on that becoming a, a bigger park, and we're always looking for other parcels through donation or through acquisition that we can work on, along with the Mountains and Sea Trail, um, that planning document that we've done from Clayton to, uh, Smithfield, which you guys came and, and helped us out by, um, showing your support, and that's come along very well, and we'll be working on that. And, uh, we've also gotten good news, or what we think is good news towards our countywide trails and Greenways master plan, which, which we think is, uh, in good shape right now. I won't say it's funded yet, but we think it's in good shape too.
Y'all have done a good job on that.
Thank you, sir.
So my one question, I see the scheduling here's, I guess, uh, they would adhere to our project schedule, so what are you looking at for completion of this?
Seven months for the master plan. Uh, so that around December, January, we'll have a full master plan to present to the, uh, board.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second, uh, on the floor to approve the master plan, uh, agreement. Uh, if that, I'll ask all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Absolutely. Appreciate all, appreciate all of your support.
All right. Next item is the USDA Rural Development and update to the board, and I believe we have State Director Reginald Spate here to speak to us.
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Spate's coming to, I might say he was, uh, a speaker at the dedication of the Antioch Fire Department, and it was always a pleasure to see you.
Can you see you, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Good evening. I have a presentation?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Again, all right. Well, I'm sorry, okay? All right, so thank you so very much, because I do know out of respect for your time, but let me say again, let me say, uh, good evening. Thank you so very much for appraising me at my presentation. I really do appreciate that. Um, uh, to, to the, the Chairman, uh, Commissioner Lawter, and, uh, to the other county commissioners present today or this evening, Commissioner Godwin, good to see you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, great to see you again, uh, to the county manager, Mr. Hester, and other county staff, and any other local elected officials who may be assembled here. Good evening again. I'm Reginald Spate, you're the, uh, Rural Development State Director, and I bring you greetings on behalf of the Commissioner of Agriculture, Secretary, uh, Tom Vilzak. Um, with me this evening, I have with me, uh, Mr. Larry Sampson, who is our area director, his office is in Lumberton, but we do have a, uh, area office or sub-area office here in Smithfield, and also have with me, Mr. Rob Kearns, our Public Information Officer, who resides here in Johnston County, but he works in, um, in the Raleigh office. I, I'd like to start off my presentations by saying, uh, that I'm new to rural development, but not new to rural. Um, I was born in Pitt County, in a little town called Farmville, uh, and I worked in tobacco fields in Wilkson County and Green County, and I still live in Wilkson. So as I had to tell a, a young child the other day, I didn't lose track of the days. They asked me why I had my Sunday shoes on, on Monday. So, uh, so just know that I know what Sunday shoes are, so, uh, but I know how to put on my Sunday shoes on a Monday. So, uh, so as I said, I'm new to rural development, but certainly not new to rural, and essentially, uh, and, and please forgive the, the presentation that this is, this is our typical and our norm, but as I said, we get into the evenings, mainly I just wanted to introduce myself to you, uh, reintroduce, uh, rural development to you, and just to let you know that you still have a friend, um, at rural development, and I will say in full disclosure, we, um, talked to your fire chief, we watched his presentation and let him know that there may be some opportunities to rural development to help make this, these projects and the things, whatever, that he's talking about more palpable. So we've already shared our contact information with him, so just so that you know that we as rural development, we stand ready to partner with you, uh, if possible, to help to make some of those things a reality, because you're right, um, as we, as we talked about at the, uh, event with the fire department, uh, when Commissioner Godwin was there, you want to see and make sure that your first responders have the best equipment so that they can not only safely respond, but then they can make sure that they are, are, are serving the people safely as well. And you don't want the fire department to come to your house, but when you need one, you want to make sure that they're equipped to be able to do it. And so, uh, so just know that we stand ready to assist you, um, in that particular endeavor if so need be. Um, I'm just quickly, I just wanted to tell you once again, and just a reminder of what we do with, uh, with rural development. Um, it falls into, um, a couple of portfolios, and there's one that I'm going to talk about more tonight, uh, than others. Uh, we have the rural housing services portfolio, which is essentially that, where we can do a housing development, where we can be the bank for individual homeowners that has to be owner occupied. So we, we can be the bank for those individuals who may not be able to get credit through a, a prime lending institution. Similarly, those who may be banked, and they, they, they may have a bank, but if they are marginal in their credit history, we can do a hundred percent guarantee on the backend, so that we can remove some of that risk that the bank may incur, uh, and, and do down payment assistance, closing costs and assistance, what have you. We also do multi-family housing. Um, the project that we talked about, just I mentioned a few moments ago, is, uh, within our community programs, uh, project where we can do fire stations and police departments and fire trucks and police cars, and we build town halls and schools and, uh, uh, community centers and different things like that and so on. That would be within that portfolio where we're having the conversations about, uh, the police department. We also have our rural business cooperative services, and though we do not supplant necessarily what happens with the Small Business Administration for businesses that are already established who are looking to expand their footprint, or if they're trying to refinance debt or what have you so that they can hire more people, we have, um, some, um, uh, programs within our portfolio that can help with that as well. Uh, lastly, and, and certainly like I said, I am, uh, just wanted, as I said, an introductory conversation with you this evening, and certainly won't be the last time that you see me, uh, but I wanted to, uh, just share with you within our rural utility services component, that is where we do the water and the wastewater and the telecom, and you probably are familiar with, um, some of the things that we do within that broadband space. Um, I just wanted to share with you this evening, uh, you probably have seen a lot in the news as of late, um, within the bipartisan infrastructure law about a lot of revenue that is out there for, for broadband. Uh, you probably have heard the, the governor's announcement, I believe it was last week, about the Affordable Connectivity Program. That is not going to come through, um, USDA Rural Development, that is an FCC, uh, Federal Communications Commission, uh, that's going through that, and that is mainly for the end user, to make, um, internet more affordable for the end user. That's what that program is for. Um, and you may have also heard about an announcement that just happened today about BEED. B as in Broadrow, E as in Edward, A as in Adam, D as in David, and that's the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program. That is for the infrastructure. That is for, and that was just announced today in, um, uh, collaboration or conjunction with the United States Department of Commerce. So just know that there is a lot of revenue out there, uh, right this moment, good, bad or indifferent. There's a lot of revenue out there right this moment, a lot of streams of revenue that are difficult to follow. And my, my last point will be this, um, what the administration is doing with, they're rolling out something called a Rural Partners Network, Rural Partners Network, and that will be beneficial to you as the county, um, and to others who would like to try to navigate the maze of federal government. Um, I've already told you about two programs, so it's here tonight about, um, broadband, uh, where there are going to be opportunities or resources that are there for the individuals that you serve. As you can imagine, there are a gambit of programs, and, and to determine where those , uh, particular opportunities fall, sometimes it's difficult to navigate. The Rural Partners Network is going to be designed that as you, the county, you, the commissioners, uh, the county manager, as you're trying to find opportunities of revenue that's out there, whether it's in a grant or loan portfolio, the Rural Partners Network is going to be almost like that one portal that you can go to. You make that call, tell them what your, uh, your, um, your area or issue of concern is, and they will direct you to the correct federal government office that will have revenue or have opportunities there to fix or address some of the issues of concern that you have. So again, that's the Rural Partners Network. It has not rolled out in the state of North Carolina yet, uh, but it is a pilot program that is happening right this moment. Um, I mean, I forgot the states that it is operating in at the moment, but North Carolina is scheduled to come online somewhere around the August, September timeframe. It will not stop you from contacting me if we left some of our, I believe that we got my business cards in your hands. You will find my email address and my cell number there. Um, I was told that I probably shouldn't put my cell number on business cards that I'm handing out so freely, but I want you to be able to find me. If you need something, I want you to be able to find me, but please know if there is an issue of concern, there are things you're working on here in Johnston County, I want to make sure you know that rural development is a tool in your toolbox, and we will help you to navigate that Rural Partners Network terrain within that federal government space for anything that you may need. So again, forgive me that, um, thank you so very much for setting up a PowerPoint and giving me a, a clicker, uh, but my clicking time is over. Uh, but, uh, but as I said, I want to be respectful of your time, and I just wanted to just ask if there are any questions that you have at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Spate?
I think he's welcome here, whether he's got his Sunday shoes on or not.
I would say so.
And I was just reminded by our Public Information Officer about a distance learning and, uh, and telemedicine, uh, grant that we, um, um, have issued here to Johnston County. Was it 1.3, uh, Public Information?
Uh, since 2019, we have, uh, we've invested close to $2 million into Johnston County School District, and that is with grants, that's not loans, that we're working to broaden the availability of the students and the educators to be able to reach out into the community and, uh, with nursing stations at Sutcho Selma to their schools, and, uh, with, um, West Johnson School and a couple others, just with increasing that net of distance learning, with that 40% of JOCO, uh, Johnston County Community College reaching into, uh, the Johnston County schools to better prepare them for college and having those college classes knocked out when they're graduating from high school.
I was going to say, did you mind walking up to the microphone, but it sounds like you're done.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah. Any, any other questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you so very much for your time. Have a great evening. Thank you very much. I'm on my way to Boone, North Carolina. I need to be there by seven. It's virtual, so don't send the cops up there, all right? Have a great.
I was going to say, we're going to get escorted, at least in the county line.
I was going to say, you don't have to share. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda is Mosley Architects with a presentation on a county space needs study. With, we have Joshua Bennett with Mosley Architects.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me this evening. My name is Josh Bennett. I'm vice president with Mosley Architects, and I worked with county officials on the production of the Johnston County Facility Space Needs Analysis and Master Plan that you have before you. Believe in your packet, you have 17 pages of a much larger 500-page document. Uh, if you'd like to go through the 500-page document, I'll be available after the meeting, uh, but I don't think that will be necessary for the purposes this, tonight. First of all, congratulations on undertaking this monumental step. This is really the first, uh, step towards understanding how growth in your county will affect how you do business into the future, uh, and as we've heard tonight, this is a living document, uh, so it is intended to be updated and used, uh, and continuously evaluated as the county makes strategic decisions in its future. So I'll walk through the document itself, uh, hitting a few highlights. If we go to page seven, that is the executive summary. We'll note that the county's population has had significant, uh, changes in, in the last 11 years, from 2010 to 2021, we've seen a population increase of 32%, and we are estimated to have an increase of 43% over the next 20 years, uh, arriving at a total population of 322,000 people. These are estimates from the North Carolina Office of, can never remember the full name. Here. Do you remember it? What's that? Um, state, state issued numbers, so we know that they're sandbagging a little bit, I think. Um, if we look at the rate of growth that we had over the last 11 years, they are projecting a slightly slower growth over the next, over the next 10. What we did, uh, was we issued a set of, um, questionnaires to the leaders of each department or division, and we sat down with them to discuss what space needs they think they need today, what space needs they need into the future. We base these projections on current needs, needs in five, 10, and 20-year hori, planning horizons. So each department head filled out a questionnaire. We then sat down with them and reviewed that questionnaire to make sure we understood what they said, uh, and then we also took that opportunity to lightly challenge what their assumptions were. How do you work? How do you deliver service? Do you really need a 400-square-foot office? Most of the time, the answer to that is no. In fact, I don't need that. And also, we asked them, do you even need an office? We had to have learned something over the last two years, and certainly that was that we can be efficient working online. Now departments such as GIS, IT, that kind of arrangement makes sense. However, for folks like tax administration, many of their folks are going to want to be in the office so that they can collect taxes. People want to have that face-to-face interaction still. So we looked at the existing spaces in the county for the departments that we evaluated. They occupy approximately 240,800 gross square feet, and based on our study, we estimate those departments needing to grow to 389,000 gross square feet to meet the need in the year 2041. That's an approximately 61% increase by that time. Uh, that is fairly commensurate with the growth that we have seen in the past and the growth that we've seen moving forward. So moving on to the purpose and scope, this document simply itemizes, uh, why we're conducting this study and the departments that were included in the study. That's on page nine. Page 11 gives a detailed breakdown of how we arrived at, at the population numbers, and there's the source of those numbers, North Carolina Office of State Budget Management. Apologies for not being able to remember that on cue, uh, but in graph format, I've shown the growth of the county there on page 12. But in graph format, I've shown the growth of the county there on page 12. I put that growth relative to the overall, to the state itself. I thought that was pertinent to this discussion because it highlights the fact that while North Carolina is growing, Johnston County is growing at a rate that is significantly faster than the rest of the state. Page 13 is for our methodology. Again, this document talks about a little bit of what I said earlier. We issued questionnaires. We met with people. We looked at how they work. When we did our projections, we don't assume that the space that they have currently is adequate, right? So when we met with each department, we walked through each department with them, and if they have a 200-square-foot office, we didn't immediately assume, well, then you have to have a 200-square-foot office into the future. We looked at what they did. We looked at the function, and we separated the need for their job function from the want or desire that they might have for the position that they hold. We also took the opportunity to standardize across the county what each position had in terms of office space or space square footage needed. So if a supervisor needed 120-square-foot office to meet with a staff person privately, then that position was identified and made equitable across all county departments. So that lays out the space needs assessments. Once we were done with that, we conducted a couple of additional tasks here, the first of which was a condition assessment summary. We went and looked at each of the buildings that the county occupies, and we documented the type and condition of system in each building. We looked at the building envelope, including the walls and the roof. We looked at the mechanical systems, electrical systems, plumbing systems, and security systems if they were present. And then we assigned them a number based on their condition. For instance, the electrical system at the Board of Elections Building is maxed out. We can't add much more to it. And while it is functional, it is difficult to maintain. So that brought the number on that building down some, okay? These numbers are not intended to indicate that any building is not habitable, right? It is only intended to tell you, hey, we have some life left in this building's systems before we may need to upgrade or replace that building. Okay? And then we, once we've done, once we completed that, we also completed master plan options. So working with Mr. Hester and county staff, we identified two options that really rose to the top that addressed the overall space needs of the county. I apologize, I have reversed these two options in your document. So on page 17, you see option one. Option one is actually option two when it comes to the costs, which are on the following pages. Yes, sir? Oh, you have the correct, you guys have the correct, great, awesome, then you're ahead of me. All right, so option one. The idea here is to construct a new Department of Social Services building, vacate building, DSS buildings 1, 2, and 3, and then either sell or surplus or do something else with that property. We would also construct a new Buildings and Grounds and Emergency Services warehouse, and we would construct a new County Administration Building on the same site as DSS. Space vacated here in the courthouse and courthouse annex by county administration departments would be renovated to backfill for the Register of Deeds and Tax Administration. Option two, we'd construct that new DSS building, vacate buildings 1, 2, and 3, build a new Buildings and Grounds warehouse, and then we would renovate buildings 1, 2, and 3 to house the courthouse, to house the administration functions. And then again, we would renovate space here in the courthouse and courthouse annex to fill those needs. Let's see here, doc. Page 19 shows a summary of the total project cost that we estimate these buildings would run. Now, they are shown as current 2026, 2031, and 2041 numbers. Basically, we picked those planning horizons. We said, here's how much each building would cost to construct, and then we said, here's when we think we're going to build those buildings. So no time, the best time to build a building is yesterday. We know that prices are only going up, so we've tried to escalate that for future planning purposes. The numbers indicated here are budget estimates only. They are total project budget estimates. That means they include things like engineering services, testing services, building costs, site costs, 10% contingency fees, furniture costs. They're intended to represent the entire cost of that project at that time. They do not include land costs. So while we've developed some options for new DSS and new admin buildings, we don't know exactly where they're going to go yet. So we include both options, option two obviously containing the renovation portions, and you can see that that total number, if we were to build all the buildings today brand new, would be approximately, all the buildings being DSS, where the warehouse building and the administration building, including estimated off-site improvements, would be approximately $99 million, whereas if we renovated it, it would be approximately $84 million. So it's a lot of information. I hope I got through it in a fairly orderly fashion. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bennett? If not, I have one quick one. So when you went back to conditions, Scobr?
Yes, sir.
Could you help me again, what is, we see a bunch of sixes and some fours. Is that a 1 to 10?
1 to 10.
Into five print, 1 to 10.
Okay. And is that a 6?
6 is pretty good. A 6 is pretty good in terms of, obviously, all the buildings have been well-maintained. I'll give the, I'll go back to the Elections Building example. That's nothing that the county really could have done to prevent. It's just the way that building is. So I think a 6 represents a very well-maintained but aged building. The systems are good. They're operable. They're maintainable, and they have been maintained, but they may be in need of full replacement in some instances. Again, those are also based on our visual inspection and our opinion. You know, we may find that they perform adequately for years and years into the future. HVAC on people's homes is estimated between 10 and 15 years. We've seen them run as much as 30.
Any other questions?
I think Josh has done a good job here demonstrating that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I do too. I think it's a lot for us to consider as we're looking, going into next budget year. I don't know that we have anything, I don't think, any action tonight, but appreciate the information and the thoroughness of that information. So I think it gives us a good basis to make a, an informed decision, so thank you.
Good. Thank you. Working with county staff has been an absolute pleasure, so thank you all very much.
We find that the same way. It's consistent.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Josh. All right, next up, we have Manager Report and Comments. Mr. Hester?
Chairman, board members, I just have one item. You know, it's budget season, and you have a public hearing scheduled for Monday, June the 6th, at 10 o'clock for the first budget piece. And I would, wanted to recommend, and obviously, your schedules are most important, but to set a budget schedule, and I was just going to recommend maybe a Monday, June 13th at 6:00 PM, and with adoption on Monday, June 20th, which you have a board meeting that night already scheduled anyway, so. We're having some folks to call us to ask about the schedule that may want to present.
Is that something we need to adopt tonight?
If you would just vote to whatever your wish is on, that would give us something to share.
Let me clarify, we would also have a budget discussion on our normal June meeting?
I would, I would, June 6th, you've already got that hearing set. I'd recommend June 13th, the next Monday night, and then adoption on the 20th.
So the 13th is, would be the only additional meeting, extra meeting?
Mainly your public interact, or groups would be on the 6th and 13th in that proposal.
Make a motion that we accept this time schedule.
Motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That's when we're going to have it. Thank you. Board reports and comments, I'll start. Mr. Brazel?
I, I would like to get the permission of the board to ask Jennifer if she would look into what our policy is on wastewater discharge allocation. We've got a lot of allocation that's sitting idle, and we're, we have a permit for 11.5 million gallons a day discharged, and we're discharging less than 7 pretty consistently here recently. And a lot of these projects, I have no way of actually figuring out, I'm working on it, but have been unable to really set up scale, how many of them have not been started. Some of these projects are aged, and the ground's not even broken on them, and we're tying up capacity that, we're not getting paid for usage at the plant. Just that, once that capacity is allocated, it's pretty well locked. I want to know what we can do to change that policy or make it work for us better than it has been. When we have capacity out there, we build a plant that's capable of treating 1.5, 11.5 million gallons of waste a day, and we're treating less than 7, so we're not getting the product bought to us to treat, so we're actually losing out on revenue from that also. So I would like to see what we can do to change that policy. It may be mandated from the state, I don't know, that's why I wanted to get Jennifer to help us if she may.
You mean like a sunset time, time gap? If it's not used?
All right.
I would support that.
Yeah, I would too. All righty. Commissioner Godwin?
Yes, I wanted to remind everybody, we've got a holiday coming up, Memorial Day in two weeks, and the county has, the Veterans Office has a memorial observance. It'll be in the courtroom, I think, 11 o'clock on Monday. Was that the 30th? And also, some of the communities around here, I know Four Oaks has got an observance at 4 o'clock on Sunday afternoon, the 29th. I'll be speaking at that, and I think some of the other communities have as well. So I would encourage all of the citizens to go out and observe, not celebrate, but observe Memorial Day. That's all.
Commissioner Brazel?
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask that you appoint two, two members to the Fire Tax Review Board. The other two members are no longer with us, and so they, they were all served on that, on that committee, and we need to meet late May, middle of June with the fire chiefs. So we need to, I need, I need for you to put some people on there, please.
All right, is that, is that something we can do, like, right now? So any volunteers to join Commissioner Tony Brazel on that board?
I'll do it.
We have one, any, any others? So I know our commissioner, our vice chair is, is not here, but given his familiarity and knowledge, I would say he would be the second one. So if there's a motion to appoint Commissioner Godwin and Harris to join Commissioner Tony Brazel on that board, I would entertain that motion.
Mr. Chairman, or, excuse me, go ahead, you go ahead.
Now, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Who we got? Patrick, me, and Ted.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Anything else? I'm here to get you taken.
I'll be checking with them, to get some dates.
Okay. I know Commissioner Harris is watching at home, so you're welcome. Commissioner Stevens? Commissioner Smith?
Just to bring up an old topic, have you thought anymore about our rules for our board?
So that was on my list at the start, and I would think in July, we'll get through the budget here in the next month of June, but I did have that on my list to bring up is, let's start taking a look at the, the rules and developing those for this board.
Thank you.
So, all right, and if it's, to me, I have, I guess, two things. One, that the clerk told me I had to say, but the other is, Mr. Spate had mentioned the broadband, and I'm not sure exactly what's involved in that from the USDA, but if you could get with staff and figure out if there's any potential opportunities there for us to expand broadband in Johnston County. And the other thing that the clerk instructed me I had to say was, following the adjournment of this meeting, after the closed session, we will be, this board will sit as the Johnston County Finance Corporation, and will hold a brief special meeting to consider a resolution related to the plan of financing for the construction of the Public Safety Center. So that's all I have, and with that, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
One quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Will we elect those officers at that meeting?
Yes, yes, yes. So we will elect the officers at that meeting, so. Thank you for that clarification. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to go into closed session for the purpose of consulting with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privileges, including but not limited to Flowers versus Aqua in Johnston County, 21 CVS, 3096 pursuant to NCGS 14331811A3, to discuss matters related to the location or expansion of industries or other business in the area pursuant to NCGS 14331811A4, and to establish or instruct staff concerning negotiations of the pricing terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property pursuant to NCGS 14331811A5.
Second, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion to go into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. After briefly clear the room, we will.
We are now back in regular session. Do I hear a motion to adjourn as the Board of Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. I move that nomination of April Stevens as Secretary of Treasury and Ted Galvin as Assistant Secretary.
That's second.
All right. All in favor of those appointments say aye. Congratulations.
Sounds like a real good job to me.
Yep, yep. So now we'll call on Chad McLennan to present. All right. This is what we just talked about, the seventeen and a half minute.
You need a motion for that? I'll make that motion.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution and approve the plan to finance the construction of the Public Safety Center. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I hear a motion to adjourn the Johnson County Finance Corporation.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Second. All in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.
Good night.